Commissioners meeting Tuesday, September the 5th. We're happy to have you all here tonight. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner King to lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. King.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this time. You've allowed us to come together. We pray tonight that you open our hearts and open our minds and let us all stay open-minded to what we hear tonight. Nobody needs to rush to any kind of decisions. Give us the wisdom that we need to do your will. And please be with everyone in their travels. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner King. I certainly appreciate it. Can y'all hear me back there?
No.
I got the green light. I don't know if it's on or not.
It's not.
All right. Maybe now? No? My wife says I'm a loud talker. I'm surprised y'all can't hear me. All right. What about now? You hear mine? You hear mine? Yeah. Mic check. All right. What about now?
Better?
Okay. Good. All right, Commissioners, you have the agenda in front of you. Any corrections or additions to that agenda? Hearing not entertain a motion to approve?
No move.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaHawn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Crump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number one on our list is recognition of Mr. Allen Dennis. That's what we're all here for. And our presenter is Chris Moon. Chris, come on up.
All right. Yep, you can hear me. Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, staff, and guests. This evening, the Stanley County Inspection Department would like to honor one of its own for his outstanding service and dedication to the citizens of Stanley County. Two weeks ago, Commercial Inspector and Plan Reviewer Allen Dennis was awarded the North Carolina Electrical Inspector of the Year by the North Carolina Electrical Inspector Association. This is a great honor for Mr. Dennis and for the Stanley County Inspection Department. To my knowledge, this award has not been given to any inspector from the county before. Our inspectors are certified in many trades to perform their duties. Each inspector must be certified in building, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and gas, among other codes. Of these codes, the electrical code is the most complex of all. To be presented this award is a great accomplishment in the electrical field and as an inspector. Allen Dennis started his career in code enforcement in 1999 with Enson County. From there, Allen worked for Stanley County, Union County, City Monroe, and then back to Stanley County in 2018. Allen has also performed contract work for Mecklenburg County, Union County, and Montgomery County. When I was hired in 2017 as director, Allen was the first person I'd offered a position to. I knew if we could hire him, that he would be a great asset to the county and would help the department work towards achieving what has become today and what improvements we strive to make in the future. Allen is married to his beautiful wife, Janelle, and has three kids, three children, Jody, Ryan, and Jared. He also has nine grandchildren. I know they are as proud of him and of his accomplishments as we are. Today, we would like to congratulate Allen on this great achievement and present him with the award from the North Carolina Electrical Inspector Association. Allen, come on up.
I appreciate it. I do try to feel like I give all I can. I appreciate Chris for his input on this thing also. I was told he'd give us some high marks to me. I appreciate he hired me back over here, you know?
Glad you came.
I mean, I love this county. I know a lot of the builders. I know people here, raise kids here. I miss Andy really bad. This is like our third tour, I believe. But I appreciate it, and I thank everybody for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate all that you do for the county. It's always a pleasure to see you out in the Western End. All right. At this time, we have public comment, and we have a lot of people signed up for public comment, and most of them are signed up under item seven. We can let you speak now, or if you want to wait until the public hearing on item seven, which is the rezoning, the zoning in the subdivisions ordinance. I'm okay with that. If everybody, I don't think I see anybody else that's signed up for anything other than that. So are y'all good with the speaking at the public comment on number seven? Love, ma'am? Okay. Come on up. If you don't mind giving us your name and address.
Yes, good evening. My name is Nancy Bryant and my husband Ron. We live at 5546 Old Thompson Road. And we are here to, it's a related topic, but not for the public hearing. Get my glasses on. Stanley County, a place to visit, a place to live, a place to love, the signs say, and you bet it's a place to love. My husband and I came from Charlotte, just a few blocks from CMC Maine Hospital 17 years ago, to search for the land that we believed we were called to buy and protect forever. Elaine Hollands, Century 21, found the acreage that we believed was calling us. We moved to the land, put it under a conservation easement with Three Rivers Land Trust, and we have never looked back. Our family's message to you right now, tonight, stop, stop, stop the developmental sprawl that is creeping inexorably to this beautiful land. Do not allow any more, and might we add, maybe greedy, uncaring developers to cut down every living tree and plant and level the lovely hills of this land, anywhere and everywhere, without a care for the land and the creatures that live there, and for you and me to have to see every day just like Charlotte, sprawling housing and buildings taking over almost every bit of green space. Yes, we must have more housing as the population increases. Yes, we realize that some families believe they have no other choice but to sell their land to developers. But there are ways to build and develop that do not destroy and level those lovely hills that you and I love and that rob you and me of its rural beauty. Some years ago, Ron and I founded Friends of the Land of Stanley County when we saw that little was happening to preserve our rural scenic life. We brought in a nationally renowned architect to speak to people from Stanley and surrounding counties to show us the very best way to provide housing and to preserve our lands. Instead of building houses all over 100 or 200 acres, build them onto a smaller area, leaving the rest for all the green life and the critters to live there together with the families to enjoy. That type housing is known to increase in value, by the way. Now you have more housing and are preserving the rural landscape for everyone. It's a win-win-win. Let's not drive through our beloved county to endless sprawl like Charlotte and some of the new developments that frankly are here already. Protect our county's land now before it's too late. We just got a note, by the way. We've just recently learned that the Council of Governments plans to educate our region's leaders and developers about preserving open space they call conservation subdivisions. So that's a good start. Our current Commissioners have received the idea positively, according we've heard. There will be further discussions and presentations soon, but not a moment too soon. Stop the sprawl. And my husband has a brief follow-up.
Ron Bryant, Old Thompson Road, Norwood. I'm an amen to what she just said. Before coming to live in Stanley County, I spent over 25 years, 1980 to 2005, discussing local and state development plans and restrictions with regulators and developments. And I have seen the negative results of the compromises we reached. Surely you have already seen the steady march of underregulated development coming right along 2427, from Charlotte to Locust, and now unfortunately even some here already. With the years of experience I have just mentioned, I have what is called standing, standing to advise you Commissioners to take heed of what my wife has just said and written to you. When you do, you will be serving our county, Stanley County, well, and we will not see more of those negative results. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know there's a lot of folks standing. There's some seats over here on this side if anybody wants to sit down. All right. Next item is item number three, North Carolina DOT Fiscal 25 5310 Capital Purchase of Service Grant Public Hearing and Program Resolution. And our presenter is Pamela Sullivan.
Good evening, Chairman Efferd and fellow Commissioners. The Senior Services Department is applying for the FY 2025 North Carolina DOT Grants. Our grant application is for 5310 funds for capital purchase of service. The $60,000 we are applying for allows the department to expand transportation services for older adults who are 65 and older. This grant allows us to purchase additional transportation services from SCUSA to provide more service above the level of our HCCBG funds. The 10% local match will come directly from the HCCBG funds that our department receives. Tonight, I would like to request approval of the application and the program resolution, along with time for a public hearing to receive comments from citizens.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I will open the public hearing regarding the fiscal year 25 5310 capital purchase. Is anyone here to speak for or against? Anyone? All right. At this time, I will close that public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman.
Yes, sir. Vice Chairman.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Thanks, sir. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Crump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
And thank you too, by the way, for the 90th birthday party for the county. I'm assuming that turned out well.
It did.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I didn't make it. I got a few years on that one. Okay. Item number four is merge regionalization grants for Town of Norwood Water and Sewer Systems. And our presenter is Mr. Dwayne Wingo, Utilities Director. Mr. Wingo.
Thank you, Commissioners. Stanley County Utilities has successfully secured two American Rescue Plan Grants from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. The purpose is to conduct a comprehensive merger regionalization feasibility study. The study will focus on the Town of Norwood's water treatment facility, water distribution system, sewer treatment facility, and sewer collection system. The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality has shown their support by approving both grant applications, resulting in a grant allocation of $75,000 for each water and sewer component of the study. The primary objective of these grants is to explore the viability of merging the Town of Norwood's water distribution and sewer collection systems, along with the associated water and wastewater treatment facilities with the Stanley County Utilities Department. Pending mutual agreement, this merger would lead to a unified operation and maintenance of these systems by the Stanley County Utilities Department. The study will encompass several crucial aspects, including a full appraisal of the Town of Norwood's water and sewer assets, a thorough financial analysis encompassing both current and projected debt-to-revenue operations, a comprehensive engineering evaluation to assess the integrity of the existing water and sewer systems, and a detailed projection of the capital cost essential for necessary improvements and repairs. Following the completion of the water and sewer evaluation, Stanley County and the Town of Norwood will have the option to either proceed with potential agreements or to decline such agreements based upon the evaluation's outcome. It is noteworthy that NCDQ or North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality will be providing full funding of these grants encompassing 100% of the grant amount. Attached herewith are two resolutions mandated by North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for the Board of Commissioners' approval. Additionally, there are two separate letters for signatures which will be addressed to the Stanley County Manager for signature. This initiative presents a promising opportunity to enhance efficiency and service quality in both water and sewer systems. Staff recommends approval of both resolutions and acceptance of the offer letter to be signed by the County Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Wingo? All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to move approval for both resolutions and the acceptance of the offer letters to be signed by the County Manager.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Shudo. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is merger regionalization of City of Locust Sewer Collection System. And our presenter again is Mr. Dwayne Wingo.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is going to sound a lot like the previous one, just a little bit different. We're doing a grant for just the sewer collection system only since the county owns the water system in Locust. Stanley County Utilities has successfully secured an American Rescue Plan Grant for the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for the purpose of conducting a comprehensive merger regionalization feasibility study. The study will focus on the City of Locust Sewer Collection System. The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality has shown their support by approving the grant application, resulting in a grant allocation of 100,000. The primary objective of the grant is to explore the viability of merging the City of Locust Sewer Collection System with the Stanley County Utilities Department. The study will encompass, you know, several crucial aspects, including a full comprehensive appraisal, a thorough financial analysis, a comprehensive engineering evaluation, and a detailed projection of capital cost. Following the completion of the sewer system evaluation, Stanley County and the City of Locust will have the option to proceed with a potential agreement or decline such agreement based upon the evaluation's outcome. It is noteworthy that NCDQ will be providing 100% funding for the grant amount. Attached herewith is the resolution mandated by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for the Board of Commissioners' approval. Additionally, there is an acceptance letter for signature which will be addressed to the Stanley County Manager for signature. This initiative presents a promising opportunity to enhance efficiency and service quality in both sewer collection systems. Staff recommends approval of the resolution and acceptance of the offer letter to be signed by the County Manager.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
You said 100% of it was coming from the state of North Carolina.
Yes, sir. 100%. None from the county? That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution and acceptance of the grant offer letter to be signed by the County Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second Commissioner Shudo. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wingo. All right. Our next item is item number six, Opioid Settlement Funding Appropriations Resolution for the Spare Partnership. And our presenter is Mr. David Jenkins, Health and Human Services Director. Mr. Jenkins.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Let me log in here. Always have a presentation I need to provide to meet accreditation records requirements, proof that we actually shared information with you all for decision-making. So very excited to be able to present on this program this evening. Staff have worked very closely with Sheriff's Office and some of our local contacts in peer support recovery in the community. You should have received a memo from our Board Chair, Jan Lauter, kind of highlighting this program. This was approved by that board to pass on to you all, so that's what I'm presenting this evening. Just a little bit of data on the ED visits in Stanley County. As you can see, where we were ranked in 2018, those numbers were much higher than where we stand today. Still, number ED visits for 2022 were at 109. With that said, but with the Community Paramedic Program and some of the wraparound services that are now available in the community, we're able to address this issue. Deaths in Stanley County have also seen a decrease. We were pretty high back in 2018, peaked during latter parts of the pandemic, and actually be able to lower the number overall, average as compared to the state average. Still looking at 20 deaths due to opioid overdoses in 2022. So word of goals of this program, reduce the number of individuals who are arrested, rearrested for drug-related crimes in Stanley County, and reduce the rate of overdoses and overdose deaths of formerly incarcerated individuals. Why is this important? Just involve individuals who are high-risk opioid use disorder, and individuals with opioid use disorder are more likely to become justice-involved as well. People who are incarcerated are 50 times more likely to overdose within the first two weeks after release. This is because they've been in jail detoxing for a few, several days or a few weeks, and when they get back out, they may return to using, and then the body does not respond well, and you end up with someone that's overdosed. Recidivism contributes to increasing costs and overcrowding in county detention centers. All that's cited information I have references for. So what's the plan? What are we offering to do? Well, we want to recover education groups to incarcerated individuals led by our certified peer support specialists. Curriculum is based on evidence-based RAP, which is Wellness Recovery Action Plan, and focused on goal-setting, crisis-planning, and overdose prevention education. These peer support specialists will assist in navigating community resources for successful reentry, also assess treatment readiness, and coordinate treatment upon release. Relationships built with the peer supports in the community, and this program will follow into the community for continued support of the wraparound services that have been established over the past several years. So who's going to do the work? Our Stanley peer recovery experts, got a couple present this evening at the back of the room. They work with groups of our Stanley County Project Lazarus Coalition, and they developed this peer-led program modeled on successful detention center programs across the state, all evidence-based. Stanley County Sheriff's Office will provide law enforcement personnel to supervise and transport groups, and the Health Department is providing support to spare and development of the program, data collection, contracting personnel, and the funding proposal. So how we know if this is going to work? Well, we've got several measures to collect data, some on process measures. How much did we do? Number of participants enrolled, number of meetings with each participant, number of meetings per week, and length of the meetings. If follow-up continues, number of participants after leaving jail, percent of clients are still engaged. Quality measures, how well do we do it? Percentage of participants referred to care, engaged in care, level participation satisfaction with the surveys that we have. So I want to get feedback from those receiving the services. Outcome measures that address, is anyone better off? That's the number percentage of participants with stable housing or reemployment, self-reported measures of client recovery capital, overall well-being, healthy relationships, ability to manage their affairs, day-to-day affairs. And then the number percentage of formerly incarcerated clients receiving community services or support within so many days of leaving jail. So these are just some of the measurements, and they match well with the MOA at the state level for federal opioid settlement funds that come down through the state to the counties. This is the budget that's being requested. I believe that was in the memo as well. County employees include four law enforcement EMS, peer support, three spare group leaders at $19,344, as contracted through our Public Health Alliance, and in supplies totaling With this request, would be looking at beginning of this program Tuesday, September 12th. We're going to start work with the sheriff and his employees, starting with the trustees, because they're very trusted in the jail and have a good work relationship to help pilot this program, and then hopefully see success from that and move forward and tackle on this issue a little bit further and making a dent on our deaths and overdoses and getting these folks back to contributing members of society again, keep them out of jail. There's our references. I'd be happy to take any questions if need be.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Any questions for Mr. Jenkins?
Go ahead, Trent.
Is this just for Stanley County residents?
Whoever is in the jail, if they're...
So question here. The way I understood it, you said they would go to the jail and work with the inmates?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know it's through Project Lazarus Coalition.
Yes, sir.
And I know there's other organizations in the county that do similar duties, and I'm all for getting the inmates that are in there help to hopefully they won't go back in again. I just hope you'll consider, I don't know how you considered the Project Lazarus over the other agency that I'm thinking about, who has previously been in the jail system up until COVID.
Well, it's not for the health department to decide. All that's determined by the Department of Justice. And as long as they can meet the reporting requirements and they're certified, and they can present the data and hit the curriculum, they can get funding. But that's not for me to decide. That's for you as the Commissioners, County Manager, to decide, because you are the fiduciary agents overseeing this funding.
Any more questions?
We've got one from Community Paramedic Division, which is one that we're already funding. That's a county employee. And we've got a couple others at the back. If you want to, y'all can come on down if you want to, Marcus, and introduce yourself, whoever's available. Now, there are certified peer support specialists, so they've been, they're coming from lived experience, and they've been doing this for a while, and we've got the evidence to back everything they've done over the past five years. Evidence-based that has actually worked in this community. You want to introduce yourself if you don't mind?
My name is Marcus Berry. I'm a peer support specialist and a community health worker. I work along with Monarch Behavioral Health and also with URI Harm Reduction Initiative.
My name is Carrie Womack. I'm a peer support specialist for Stanley County EMS. I'm also an EMT basic.
I'm Robbie Kegel, and I ran the UHRI, URI Harm Reduction Initiative, in Grace Place, and have worked with these folks for quite a few years.
Could you all give me an idea of what you do when you go to the jail to meet with an inmate that maybe has been on drugs?
What we would do is basically we're going in, work with the five wellness concepts, which is helping them with self-advocacy, self-responsibility, education, support, and also giving them a hope factor, because we're also in long-term recovery ourselves. So we're just giving them through a hope factor. But what we intend to do is go in, get a treatment plan together for them, and once they get out, be the bridger. So we didn't partner with a lot of entities here in Stanley County, so when they do get out, if they want to go to inpatient, outpatient, whatever they want to do, we'll have a road already set up for when they get out. Because me being formerly incarcerated, when I got out, I went back to what I knew, but now we're trying to be that bridger to be able to guide them so when they get out.
Thank you very much, sir. I really appreciate that. Any other questions?
I'd like to just make one quick comment. I don't know, can you hear me? I worked shoulder to shoulder with Robbie Kegel, and I can only speak to Ms. Kegel, and she did an impeccable job. When I worked with at-risk teens at the academy here 15 years ago or so, we worked with several students that we loved dearly, and I would put you up with anyone. So I'm grateful to see you in this role. Thank you for what you do. they get out, be the bridger. So, we didn't, we didn't partner with a lot of entities here in Stanley County, so when they do get out, if they want to go to inpatient, outpatient, whatever they want to do, we'll have a road already set up for when they get out, because me being formerly incarcerated, when I got out, I went back to what I knew, but now we're trying to be that bridger to be able to guide them so when they get out.
Thank you very much, sir, I really appreciate that. Any other questions?
I'd like to just make one quick comment, I don't know, can you hear me? I worked shoulder to shoulder with Robbie Cagle, and I can only speak to Ms. Cagle, and she did an impeccable job. When I worked with at-risk teens at the academy here 15 years ago or so, we worked with several students that we love dearly, and I would put you up with anyone, so I'm grateful to see you in this role, thank you for what you do.
Any more questions, comments?
Will you have set meetings for the folks that are getting out? Will there be a meeting point? Will we be providing transportation to and from?
We'll be able to work it out with Sheriff's Office and County Manager, it'll take place in the courtroom after hours.
Okay.
So, they'll use the tunnel to transport.
Even after they're out, I mean, because didn't you say that this would be a transition once they get out also that you'd work with them?
Yes, that'll be the peer support, we follow up with them.
But would that be at a public meeting place, or do y'all have a place?
You won't speak that, it probably depends on...
I didn't know if there was a place lined up for that.
It depends on where they want to go, far as like, we have a different, a lot of different treatment centers that they can go to, and we are partnering up with URI Home Reduction, they do have a transport system, so we'll have it where, what we're trying to do is, if they don't want to touch back in Stanley County or wherever else, we're trying to get them scraped to wherever they go, and we have a one-year follow-up plan where we're going to follow them the whole time consistently for that whole year, so that if everything goes successful, they become a productive member of society again, we can bring them back to the jail and let them present as a success story.
Thank you so much, I appreciate y'all coming out, appreciate your time.
All right, any more questions? Yes, sir, Commissioner, I mean, County Manager.
I'd like to comment that the sheriff and I have had some conversations about some of the other educational programs that we used to do in the jail pre-COVID bill, and maybe how we can get those things back in place. They may not meet, those certain curriculums may not meet the requirements of the MOA with the Department of Justice, but their educational services, life-scale services that laid on top of this type of program would be very, would be very helpful for these same inmates, and so we've had some conversations about how we can build those components into this educational time while they're, we have them a captive audience in these classrooms across, in the courthouse on these evenings, and so we're having some conversations about how we can make that work, but that likely would be a different funding stream that the sheriff has, that we, we didn't use that, the funding stream we used for those educational programs before was not the opioid settlement funding, it was through other funding sources that the Sheriff's Office had. So, we're in conversation about how we can augment this with some other types of things.
All right, any more questions? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of the opioid settlement funding in the amount of $63,500 for recovery support services and reentry program.
All right, now I have a motion, do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Shudo, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries. Commissioners, I don't know what's going on with the mics here, thank you, Mr. Jenkins, but you might have to hold these things up closer because we're getting comments that people are either watching online or something, and I don't know if you folks in the back can still hear us, but I feel like I'm swallowing this thing now, but hopefully we'll get through this. All right, next item is ZA 23-07, text amendment to the zoning and subdivision ordinance, and our presenter is Mr. Rensberg, Mr. Rensberg?
Thank you, good evening, Chair and Commissioners, good to be with you this evening. I'll work through this as quickly as possible, of course, since there are many new people in the room, I think it's kind of important that we provide a bit of background on how we've gotten to this point. First, the proposal that is before you denied is a recommendation from the planning board. Some of the board members were somewhat reluctant to move forward on this proposal, some of the planning board members, as they were concerned about unintended consequences which may occur when trying to make what they saw as a fairly drastic change in the minimum lot sizes. In January, the planning board rejected a proposal brought by staff that slightly increased lot sizes and told the staff that they prefer to see a more comprehensive plan for implementing a way to preserve agricultural and natural areas. For this reason, staff was primarily working to create language toward conservation subdivisions and was cautious about moving forward. In their June meeting, the planning board considered a request from the Board of Commissioners to create a 60,000-square-foot minimum lot size in the RA and rural preservation areas. Several citizens in attendance at the planning board meeting pointed out that the land use plan, which was adopted in November of 2022, included a recommendation that lots in areas identified as rural living should have a minimum lot size of five acres. After much discussion at that planning board meeting and continued concerns about unintended consequences, the planning board went ahead and voted to send the recommendation, recommendation to the Commissioners that would require a five-acre minimum lot size in the RA zoning district where the rural preservation area had been established in the land use plan. After the legislative hearing that you held on August 9th, you decided to advertise a new hearing that gives the board some flexibility in the minimum, in what minimum square footage lot size is appropriate for parcels that are both in the RA zoning district and the rural preservation area and for lots created as a family subdivision. This slide shows the language advertising the public hearing for this meeting. This is what was in the newspaper and has been out there, but anyhow, you can see, this is a text amendment to Section 701 and 13.3 of the zoning ordinance to increase minimum lot sizes for parcels zoned RA residential, agricultural, and designated as rural preservation area in the land use plan to an amount that is not less than 1.5 nor more than five acres, increase the side setback requirement for parcels larger than 40,000 square feet, and zoned RA residential, agricultural to 25 feet, from 15 feet to 25 feet, and add language to the subdivision and zoning ordinance as allowing family subdivisions with a lot size of not less than 40,000 square feet and not more than 60,000. I do want to clarify for everyone that when we normally say the word subdivision, we tend to think of a property divided into 20, 50, or 100 or more lots to create a major subdivision, such as Copper Ridge or Garma Mill Estates, Stanley Farms, or Hawthorne Commons, but actually, in planning terms, a subdivision, as it says on this screen, is any division of an existing parcel into two or more parcels. It's important to note that each parcel, the remainder parcel and any new parcels must meet the minimum lot size that is established in the ordinance. So, for example, this is a recent subdivision in Stanley County, it's one tract with 10.61 acres divided into two parcels. This is a subdivision of land, even though it's just two parcels. If the Board of Commissioners adopts the original proposal of five-acre minimum lot size, this particular subdivision would not be approved because, and if you can see it in the fine print there, one of the lots is 4.2 acres in size. Under the five-acre proposal, both parcels would have to equal or exceed five acres in size. Since these lots have already been created, though, the 4.2-acre lot would become a legal non-conforming lot under the five-acre proposal. Now, of course, you may change that number as this evening progresses. If it is not, I mean, it's also important to know that any non-conforming lot, and I had this question just this evening from a person in the audience, is still a buildable lot. A home could be placed on a smaller lot shown, the smaller lot shown here, as long as setbacks requirements are met and it is approved of septic system or has public sewer available to it. This would be true of any existing lot in the county jurisdiction, so no matter the size, as long as they can meet setbacks and they can have a way to dispose of waste, then it's a buildable lot. All right, a couple other quick things, this is a zoning map of Stanley County, it shows the municipal zoning as well as the county zoning. The light, this green area on the map is the RA zoning district, so this is every, a lot of the county is in this RA zoning district. My second map, this was created following a survey of current property uses, interviews with local residents, public meetings, and so on. Central Lina Regional Council created this future land use designation area map for the Stanley County Land Use Plan that was adopted last November. All areas shown in green are designated as rural preservation area. So, you put the proposal, which says rural preservation area and RA zoning district together, then you end up basically with this map. This is the proposal before the Commission, let's see, yeah, to increase the minimum lot size are both RA residential, agricultural, zoning district, and the rural preservation area. Most parcels in the area shown in red are affected by the proposed text amendment. Parcels that are not in both of these areas are, of course, not affected by this proposal. All right, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this particular slide, you may remember Commissioners from last time, but you can see the total number of parcels in the county jurisdiction, which are both RA and rural preservation area, are just under 13,000, with over 9,000 of these less than 10 acres in size. Under the five-acre proposal, any lot less than 10 acres could no longer be subdivided unless the family subdivision language applies. We were recently asked about how many lots, these are the numbers at the bottom of the screen, how many lots in the affected area have less than 40,000 square feet, that's .92 acres, and of course, that is 1,834 lots, and then, of course, we were asked also about 2.5 acres, just to give you kind of an idea of what's in between five acres and our current 40,000-square-foot requirement, and that's 5,365 lots that would be affected that way. All right, this is the language from page 75 of the land use plan, I'm not going to go over it really, but it calls for us to amend the ordinances to increase minimum lot sizes and encourage conservation subdivisions, right, and of course, explains that this is a process that we'll have to go through in order to bring the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance in compliance with the land use plan. All right, I did, in preparing for tonight, I found an 11-acre parcel, and I apologize to anyone in the audience if this is your land, I just literally reached out on our GIS system and found this 11-acre tract, very nice home in the middle of the parcel. So, let me explain this a little bit, this is in both the rural, the RA district, zoning district, and the rural preservation area, and then I created a couple of kind of ideas of what this could be. Of course, if we do a five-acre minimum lot size, obviously, they can divide this as long as both lots are at least five acres in size, and you can see the map on the right showing just cutting out five acres roughly of land there on the south side of the parcel, south of the house, and then you could create another lot, which of course, could contain another house or be used for some purpose that's allowed in that particular district, which of course is RA, which is mostly residential and agricultural. Let's look, just cutting out there around the house, one lot here shows, this, one of the left shows a two minimum, a two-acre lot minimum size, so if you, if you change that five acres to two acres, potentially that's what you're cutting out. If it's three acres, you cut out what's on the right. If it's four acres, perhaps you cut it out this way, and if it's five acres, you could see how much of the land is cut out in that situation. Of course, in all this, it could be configured many different ways, and it could be divided into multiple lots for homes. Under current ordinance requirements, what we have in place right now, a minor subdivision of this parcel could allow four separate lots of 2.75 acres each, or the owner could create three small lots at 40,000 square feet and preserve about 8.25 acres as one parcel. The challenge that we face, both as Planning Department and you as Commissioners, is how do we preserve our rural areas and still allow property owners the flexibility to divide their property in a way that they desire and promote the free use of their land while encouraging, as we all like to do, preservation of agricultural, open space, and wildlife areas? It's not an easy answer, or not an easy question, and there's no easy answer, and larger lot sizes are potentially one of the options that we have before us as a way to help control subdivision, major subdivision growth. Here's the actual language of the ordinance, not particularly exciting, but you can see where we're just simply changing part of the chart and doing some explanation to it by that letter G with minimum lot size in areas designated as rural preservation area, then family subdivisions would be exempt, so of course, we also have to add some language about family subdivisions. This does establish a new setback for lots of greater than 40,000 square feet of 25 on the side, side yard setback, whereas currently it's 15, but anything less than 40,000 or less would still be 15. And then again, language here that would allow the immediate family members to receive property from their family, and then it defines eventually, of course, what that is as well, which is this, which gets added to the definitions of the ordinance, of both ordinances. So, I'm going to end more or less with this. In summary, you know, this is what the planning board recommended, five-acre lot sizes to match the 2040 land use, land use plan suggestion. This would apply to lots which are both in the RA residential, agricultural, zoning district, and the rural preservation area. If adopted, lots created must be five acres or larger. Of course, if you change that number, it would, you know, we, you can change the five acres to anything between one and a half and five, including the remainder lot, so they'd have to both be five acres, that's what people don't sometimes realize. This would not apply to lots which are in other zoning districts or in municipal zoning districts outside, or outside the rural preservation area, okay? So, it doesn't affect anything in the towns, and it's, again, only applies to that rural agricultural district and properties that are in rural preservation. There is an exemption for estates, wills, and court orders per North Carolina general statutes. In most situations, this would require that the parent parcel contain twice the minimum lot size, so you always keep that in mind, before it can be divided, okay? So, if you got, if you set a four-acre minimum lot size, then eight acres is pretty much, anything smaller than eight acres could not be divided, okay, unless it's a family subdivision or one of these other exceptions apply, okay? Proposed exception for family subdivisions, which is included in this, and you need to make a determination tonight of whether that's a 40,000-square-foot lot or anything between 40,000 and 60,000. The current proposal says 60. Existing lots, as I mentioned before, are buildable, whether or not they conform, conform with current minimum lot size as long as setbacks met and they pass sole evaluation. So, after your hearing tonight, as you'll hear from many people, I'm sure, you can either adopt a minimum lot size for lots that are both in the RA district and rural preservation that are between one and a half and five acres, and set the minimum lot size for family subdivisions to between 40,000 and 60,000 square feet. You can table this for more review and recommendation, or send it back to the planning board, or you can, of course, reject it as you, as you wish, and leave the ordinances as they currently stand. As you know, the county has contract with Central Lina Regional Council to review the draft conservation subdivision addition to our ordinances, which would require major subdivisions to set aside somewhere between 30 to 50% or more of their parcel for open space, farmland, or wildlife land preservation. Hopefully, we'll have that ready to come before you by sometime early next calendar year. That's the proposal. Mr. Chairman and Board Members, that's my presentation, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rensberg. Any questions for Mr. Rensberg from the board?
Mr. Rensberg, can you explain the family subdivision for the crowd?
Okay, I'll do my best. So, the idea here is that, and for everyone here, is that you would create a, an option, so if you have, if you have a parcel, that's round numbers, I guess we'd say 10 acres or something, and you want to cut off a section of that and give it to one of your family members, and that immediate family definition here is immediate family, so this is, these are the family members, husbands, wives, mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, children, grandmothers, grandfathers, grandchildren, aunts, uncles, nieces, nephews, and surviving spouses of all the above. So, that's, you could do that. Now, again, the board has an opportunity to set that, currently that is, we don't have such a part of the ordinance, but basically, your minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet in this area, so you could do 40,000 square feet, you know, that's, that's the current for anybody. This would limit it, you can't, you know, you don't, you aren't gifting it or selling it to your best friend, or, you know, cousin three times removed, nieces or nephews, yes, but, but there's, there's a limit to who you could, could do this to, and ideally, you could only, you know, it's a one-time sort of thing with, let's see, what's the word? And your, the, trying to see where the language is, yeah, the, it's in letter G here, who is not an immediate family or granted, cannot be resold or deeded for at least three years from the date the lot is established. So, they couldn't sell it or give it to a grandson or something, and then the grandson turn around immediately and resell it to somebody that's not, that's not an immediate family member of them. them. So, I don't know, it gets complicated. Maybe you're sorry to ask the question, but there it is.
Bob, you said give. How about give or sell?
Give or sell. Yes, I'm sorry, give or sell. Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Rimsburg?
Yes, Ms. Rimsburg.
From some of the information that I've gathered, just correct me if I'm wrong in for clarification, there are right now over 1,800 parcels that are already less than an acre that if they were for sale, they're grandfathered in, and they can be built on. That's correct?
That's correct. Again, any lot, and this really isn't just limited to the RA zoning district, any lot in the county, again, if you can meet setbacks and find a sewage disposal way, then you can build on it.
Okay, and then there are 5,400 roughly that are 2.5 or less, I believe is what I was sharing.
Fifty, 5365, and these are approximate, it's, of course, obviously, this is always in flux as people divide the property, and sometimes hard to get those exact numbers, but that's close.
All right, any more questions? All right, and thank you, Mr. Rimsburg.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Couple things I would like for you to do. When you come up, some of you have signed up already, and I have your name, if you just give us your address, and when we're finished, I will ask anybody else if they want to come up and speak. I would ask that we be respectful of people's comments. We are going to have comments from both sides, I'm sure. Please ask that you be respectful of the ones that are speaking, and that you would limit your time to three minutes. County manager will be sort of keeping track, and at this time, I will open the public hearing. First one I have is Mr. John Henderson. All right, the next one I have is Mr. Tom Hearn. Mr. Hearn?
Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners, I am Tom Hearn, a resident at 434 West South Street in Albemarle. I thank you for this opportunity. I did email a copy of my comments this afternoon to each of you, as well as to Mr. Lucas and Mr. Rimsburg. This is a critical time for Stanley County. Will Stanley County keep its rural nature, or will it fall into the sprawl of development we see in nearby counties? This issue is not about government telling you what you can and cannot do with your land, it's about preserving the rural nature of Stanley County. Many of you are on record as saying that keeping our rural character of Stanley County is important. One of you is quoted as saying, "You love to see rolling green hills instead of housing developments with houses closely built together." Everyone needs to drive just south of Albemarle and take a look at the Morgan Hills development. Just imagine the Morgan Hills development in the midst of the farming community of Millingport. The area would be forever changed, and we then fit right in with what is seen in Union and Mecklenburg Counties. You don't have to go far to see the results of unchecked development. A short trip along US 74 in Union County will give you a very good picture of what lies ahead for Stanley County. A few individuals will make a lot of money from unchecked development, but the average Stanley County resident will suffer. Larger lot sizes are currently required, larger lot sizes than currently required have been proposed, but a majority of you voted against that proposal. That is fine. There may be better ways to achieve a goal of preserving the rural areas. However, if you are against supporting larger lot sizes, it's not acceptable to simply vote against it. You must offer a better solution. Not long ago, I met a young man who had recently moved Albemarle from Union County. He works in Indian Trail, but he chooses to live in Albemarle. I asked him how he made that decision. His answer surprised me and made me sad. He was able to buy a new stick-built house in Albemarle cheaper than he could buy a double-wide in Union County.
30 seconds, Mr. Hearn.
His answer screams that Stanley County is the low-cost housing solution for people working in Union and Mecklenburg Counties. The reason low-cost housing is a major problem is that it requires tremendous infrastructure support, such as water, sewer, fire, police, communications, and so forth, and don't forget roads and schools. Where will the money come from to support this? You know where it will come from. It will come from the current residents of Stanley County in the form of higher taxes, and higher taxes. A majority of you have stated that maintaining Stanley County's rural character is important, and yet, a majority of you voted against larger lot sizes in the rural area. You cannot preserve rural character with low-cost development on small lot sizes. You simply cannot have both, just like you cannot expect to lose 30 pounds if you continue to throw down ice cream and bonbons. Here's the question, how do you envision Stanley County 10 years from now? What is best for Stanley County? You are being asked to work together, use your experience, common sense, integrity, and look into future and do what is best for all the people of Stanley County. You have been given a unique opportunity. I have no doubt that together, you will make the right decision for Stanley County's future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next one I have is Gary Hatley. Mr. Hatley, if you would give us your address and keep it to three minutes, please, sir.
I live on 73 and Finger. I'm also here representing the Stanley County Farm Bureau.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we applaud your effort to preserve your county's savable farmland and open space. Agriculture is North Carolina's leading economic engine, having a $103.2 billion economic impact and employing one-fifth of the state's workforce. The value of agricultural production in Stanley County is $90.3 million, which does not begin to convey the full economic value of agriculture in this county. The conversion of our state's farmland to non-farm uses is a serious threat to the future of agriculture in North Carolina. According to American Farmland Trust 2020 study, Farms Under Threat, North Carolina is second only to Texas in conversion of farmland to urban and residential uses. From 2001 to 2016, 732,000 acres of farmland in North Carolina were converted to urban or residential uses. That amounted to almost 7% of our state's farmland. Meanwhile, North Carolina ranked fourth in population growth with 1,947,000 residents. Clearly, development and population growth are not slowing. The AFT study predicts that by 2040, North Carolina will, at its current pace of farmland conversion, convert another 1.2 million acres of farmland to other uses. And I would think it'd be more than that because since 2016, it's been a lot more than the word before 2016. The growth of residential and commercial development pressure from Charlotte has made land in Stanley County too expensive for those who would purchase and lease the land for farming. It is our hope that the proposed downzoning will increase the availability of land for agriculture. Agriculture is a good deal for county tax revenue as well. According to cost of community service surveys that have been conducted in 15 North Carolina Counties, Stanley wasn't one of them, but is in 15 counties. On average, residential development requires $1.26 community services for every dollar it brings in tax revenue. By comparison, farmland only requires $0.64 in community services for every dollar it provides, and commercial and industrial development is even better at $0.36. But we're talking about our RA zones. We're basically comparing residential and agriculture uses, and I believe I can safely say that a large percentage of the buyers of the houses being built in RA zone are working and spending in other counties. They're coming here to spend a night, but they're still shopping and everything in Concord and Charlotte and everywhere else. The Stanley County Farm Bureau supports the consideration of all tools for farmland preservation that are at the county's disposal, especially those that respect private property rights and do not deprive farmers of these rights without just compensation. We encourage voluntary incentive-based programs like the voluntary ag district program.
30 seconds, sir.
Present use value assessment of farmland, forest land, and horticultural land, and our county's farmland preservation plan. We believe the proposal before the board will also benefit farming operations throughout all of Stanley County. And I don't think any farmer is immune because last year, I lost 10 acres to development. I've lost way more than that recently, so, but just in the past year, 10 acres.
Thank you, sir. Next one I have signed up is Mr. Dustin Souther.
Appreciate you guys' time and your service to our county and our communities. I don't come up here today with a prepared speech. I took the time Friday to call and try to talk to most of you, so I'm just here to show my presence and support, and I really hope you will support and vote for the five acres. I come to you as a resident of Rogers Road in Richfield, North Carolina. I was born and raised in Bloomington. I'm 40 years old, I've lived in this county my entire life. I never dreamed I would see the sprawling development that we've seen in the last year and a half to two years in my community. One of the objections I hear to this five acre deal is how it's, folks can't afford to buy five acres to build their dream home in the community. Well, if you make it smaller, folks can't afford to buy two acres as it is now. They can't afford to buy two and a half acres as it is now. And I'll give you a real-life example of what's happened. I was fortunate enough to find a nice tract of land in 2016 that my family and I purchased, around 67 acres in Richfield. We got it for less than $300,000. That's seven years ago, right? Right now, within five to seven miles from me, there are two more tracts of land for sale. You can look up on Zillow today, one of the 75 acre tract of land for sale on Harwood Road. It's listed for over $1 million. Now you tell me what, who here can afford a $1 million tract of land out in the county? We've got to pass this five acres to disincentivize these greedy developers that want to do nothing more than rape this county's land for profit. That's all they want to do. Another tract of land, just a few more miles down the road, on Old Mill Road, 140 acres, $2.5 million. Who can afford these tracts of land? Are farmers going to spend $2.5 million to farm land that they'll never be able to pay for? I mean, I'm not a farmer, but I'm smart enough to know that doesn't make sense. So, if we're going to do something, we have to do something that makes a real change. We cannot just do two acres, two and a half acres. We have to do something to disincentivize the huge numbers on these large tracts of land. Make it, we have to make it affordable for these farmers to buy this land, or other folks like me that just want to own land, and not necessarily farm it, but own it to enjoy it, whatever. Make it affordable for the real world, real person, not just somebody that's going to come here and stack four houses to an acre, turn a quick profit. They can make that $1 million back like that, it's not a problem for them. And in talking to all you guys this weekend, most of you say you do support this in some way. If you do support it and you do appreciate what this county's beauty is built on.
30 seconds, sir.
Then I would ask that you support the full five acres and nothing less. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for providing the public with the opportunity to provide feedback and input on the proposed zoning changes for the RA property. My name is Wayne Cobal. I live at 1255 Bennington Drive in Concord, but I happen to own approximately 145 acres in Stanley County, and my oldest son lives at 8008 Highway 205 South. I support the idea that there needs to be some regulations in place so developers do not run wild. I would like to offer some ideas and suggestions for the commission to consider before acting on the proposed zoning changes. Instead of restricting the lot sizes to five acres, charge the planning department with the responsibility to review development plans to maintain the rural environment for RA properties. They can assist the developer to design the development with green space and common areas, which could work better than just requiring a lot size of five acres. This would provide the ability to design the development to better utilize the natural rural nature of the property. Guidelines and requirements can be developed to provide developers on the overall design for residential developments. On a second note, five acre lots would significantly increase the cost to home buyers and could have the potential for not allowing a lot of people the opportunity to own a home. Many of you home buyers are not interested in owning tracts of land of this size, or have the means or the ability to maintain this property size. If you would increase the lot sizes to acre or two acres, might be a more appropriate size, but they need to have the required requirements for improving and continuing to maintain the natural rural area of the county. I would urge you to postpone deciding on these RA changes tonight and give some thought to the suggestions and ideas that you've heard and will hear tonight from people. As you know, there are multiple ways to solve the issues, and I would encourage you to look at alternatives to accomplish what your objectives are. Request the planning board to review the suggestions and ideas presented here tonight, and propose several alternatives for the commission to consider. Stanley County needs to balance the growth for residential and industrial, commercial growth to provide planned expansion toward conflicts among developers. Working together, I feel like we can accomplish more, and everyone will benefit. Thank you for listening to these thoughts, and I hope you can have been helpful and beneficial. I'd be glad to assist the planning board or anyone else to work on alternatives for these goals. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly Hart?
Who am I, with my book again? I'm Kelly Hart. I live at 4208 River Road, Midland, but I do live inside Stanley County, and I've worked on this land use plan for quite a long time now. I know y'all all know that the time that was put into this thing, we spent over a year sending out surveys, talking to taxpayers, having community meetings, asking people's opinion. This wasn't just something that somebody came up with and said, "Oh, five acres sounds good, let's do that." There was a lot of thought put into that five acres, and a lot of thought put into the conservation subdivision that seems to be just forgotten by most people, as far as everybody's so hung up on this. But I really feel like if you want to do what the people of the county, the majority of the county wants, and the people that cared enough to participate in those surveys, and come to those community meetings, and say what they wanted, you will vote for the five acres. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Anthony Graves, Jordan Pond Drive in Indy/Albemarle. I didn't come here tonight to argue on behalf of the folks that were wanting to keep things the way they are or pass the five acres. I think you all know my position, and I think they're valid arguments on both sides. But what I did come here to speak to tonight is this. I would ask you if you saw it, but I guarantee that you've seen it probably hundreds of times over the weekend since it was sent out last week. And I think it's probably why we're, most of us here tonight are here. But what a lot of people don't realize is that this mailer's full of lies. And what disturbs me about this mailer is the fact that you have people, good people on both sides. It's difficult to have an honest conversation and a productive conversation when you have people instigating nonsense like this. Grandma and Grandpa Smith own eight acres of land and want to give their newly wedded grandson an acre of land to build his family home, but under this proposal, buyer county commissioners says it not be allowed. It's a lie. Anyone that came to the last meeting knew it was a lie. Anybody that's been paying attention for a year and a half has known it's a lie. But this is what riles people up. So I hate to say that unfortunately, no matter how you vote, you're going to make the wrong decision. Because these people are going to remind the people, not the people that pay attention to politics, but the people that are out working, trusting the people that they elected to office to do the right thing, which you guys will do, I'm totally confident, totally confident in that. But they are trying to divide the community, and it's all about manipulation, intimidation, so that when they want something for real, because if you read this, it's a bunch of nonsense. It even says in here that if you pass this, it says, "More land will likely be divided into small parcels destroying family farms." It's the exact opposite. I mean, I can go through each one. I mean, I can go through each one. But folks, look, we appreciate you. I know you're going to do the right thing. And this kind of nonsense unfortunately happens all too often in Stanley County, and it's unfortunate.
Thank you, sir.[613.16][613.16](APPLAUSE). Next speaker is Dekeeta Vanderburg.[622.16][622.16](MUTTERING).
Chairman Eford and Honorable Commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm Dekeeta Vanderburg. I do reside in Cabarrus County. I am here to represent the Central Carolina Association of Realtors, which does represent Stanley, Montgomery, and Cabarrus County. Stanley County has always been a big part of my life because from the '70s until 2001, I spent at least five days a week in the town of Locust with my business. It was a building supply, so therefore it depended on its livelihood from building houses, stick-built houses I might add, and also supplying people with homes. All my life, I have valued the rural makeup of Stanley County, and that stands today as well. We do have an affordable housing crisis in our country, our state, as well as in this county. The proposed change to the five-acre parcel limit means those seeking the American dream will have to go somewhere else. Many cannot afford five acres to build their dream house in. In my work as a real estate agent, I often have people asking about Union County, Stanley County, Cabarrus, and they say, "I just want one or two acres to be able to build a home for myself, my family." And they say they don't want the overreach of an HOA. They say they don't want to reach out and touch their neighbor like some of these neighborhoods are. So they don't want to be on a postage stamp lot, but they want to be in a rural setting where it's quiet and they can enjoy their life. Does the five-acre rule afford them that opportunity? I'm not sure. As a conservative, I am also concerned about the overreach of a government entity taking away the rights of the citizens of Stanley County to decide what to do with their land. Growth is always a hard conversation. I see it in many counties, not just Stanley. But I do feel that controlled growth is a possibility, but you sometimes have to think outside the box. However, we also need to think about at what point do you hinder the economic development for Stanley County when throughout the North Carolina or even the country, it is deemed that you are closed for business, and you don't want that?
30 seconds, ma'am.
The other thing is, the message that you don't want to say to people is, "You are not welcome here." It's with great respect that I ask you to consider perhaps two or three acres for this rural area. I agree, control needs to be exercised over the uncaring big builders who come in and clear-cut your forest. And consider the little guy then, the one that wants to build that house, to be able to have a garden, to be able to see his kids run in the yard. Those are the important people that I think you guys are representing. Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't read you right. I'm sorry.[875.66][875.66](HONEY CUTT LAUGHS).
That's all right. I didn't really...
You don't mind being Hal tonight, do you?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'm prepared to... I'm, uh, Hub Honeycutt at 32607 Millport Road. I didn't come to really speak tonight, but I just, you know, we elected y'all to make the right decisions. I mean, y'all got people's vote to make the right decisions for Stanley County. And I'm not going to go up here, stand up here and go over everything everybody said, but just listen to what they said, and y'all take that in consideration. And as far as these little flyers go, I think that stooping pretty low. I think that stoop's pretty low. I mean, y'all know, y'all know that ain't true. I mean, y'all know the whole story behind it. But just think about it, think about the land, think about the farmers, think about the builders. Take it all in consideration and just, you know, y'all make the right decision. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sorry about messing up your name.[930.01][930.01](APPLAUSE). Shane Allman.[935.32][935.32](MUTTERING). Shane, I appreciate you pointing that out for me, sir.
I just happened to see him. I figured that's who it was. I want to talk about our littlest citizens that seem to nobody care about. Every school in Stanley County is over 90% capacity. And I'll start out at the West Stanley end. That's where all the growth is going. West Stanley High School, 95% to 100% over capacity. Locust West Stanley Middle, 100% to 110% over capacity. Indy, over 110% capacity. So where we're going to put the kids, all these developments? Well, as of right now, there's 370 developments in Stanley County. That's not the ones that have already been considered and coming. On average, .40 students are per residential lot. So you go figure, every two houses, there's going to be one child that's going to enter Stanley County Public Schools. And as this year so far, they've spent 200 extra kids since August. 38% of teaching hours in 2022 was done by substitute teachers or ESS workers. That's how understaffed we are. And a lot of these parents know, you're going to get a text once, twice, maybe three times in a week that you need to, somebody needs to pick your child up. So before any development, any development's done, that's the first, our first priority should be the children, because everybody talks about education, education, but nobody cares when it comes down to it. And everybody, it's a farce when you talk about housing costs. The more houses you build, the cheaper it gets. That's wrong. And Midland, we'll start at Midland. I ain't even going to talk about Harrisburg. Midland, $360,000, that's average house. Locust, $352,000. Stanfield, $344,000. Oakboro, $297,000. Red Cross, $285,000. If housing made the price go down, where's all the housing going? Locust. So that's a farce, anybody that says that. And the reason that five acres was put forth is because nobody out here cared enough to come to the planning board meeting. They wouldn't have builder out here, they wouldn't have developer here, and there was only one, only one Realtor come to the planning and zoning when we discussed it, five acres. There were several of us that was on the other side, but they didn't care because they didn't think that the planning and zoning had guts enough to do it, I guess. And there'll be people say the realtors are going to sue, going to sue. Well, you got Jamie Carrick right there. Their whole family's here farming. The grain that they produce makes the bread and cereal that everybody eats here. The grain that they produce feeds the cattle that's for hamburgers and steaks.
30 seconds, sir.
The grain that they produce feeds the chickens, the pigs, and the grain, or the cotton they produces makes you clothes. So without them, you'd be naked and die of starvation.[1114.33][1114.33](LAUGHTER). Farmers in the county spend millions of dollars on feed, seeds, and fertilizers, millions on tractors, combines, and trucks. We spend millions of taxes. When there's something to be done, we do it. These, the other side, when they get done suing you, using you, and abusing you, then they will be done with you. We'll still be here. When you're stuck on the side of the road, we'll be the one to drive by, stop, help you change your tire. Thank you.
Mr. Roddy Dowell Jr.[1166.08][1166.08](MUTTERING).
Good evening, Commissioners and staff, and thank you all for allowing me to speak before you tonight. My name is Roddy Dowell Jr., and my wife, Jay, and I own farms at 20058 Old Sandbar Road and 6002 Dry Hill Road and some other parcels that are appendages from those main bodies of land. We're here tonight to speak in support of the proposal to expand the parcel size for development in the new land use plan. It is really unfortunate, as noted by some of the folks who spoke earlier, that anonymous texts and social media posts have tried to confuse the public about the issue at hand. Far from being overreaching, the proposal that y'all are considering tonight is all about protecting our precious county from becoming overrun by cheaply-built, densely-packed developments that will put pressure for increasing taxes on all the citizens of the county. This type of poorly-planned housing will degrade the value of the property owners, of the property of landowners whose land is encroached upon by these developments. In my business career, I've traveled extensively across the United States and abroad. My experience has shown me that a rural county that does not have a plan for the future risks becoming a bedroom communities for their larger urban neighbors. This has already occurred in Union County, Lincoln, Cabarrus, and over the state line in South Carolina. We see it happening in parts of Locust and Albemarle. The taxes on these very inexpensive dwellings, the four units to the acre, don't cover the demand for services, which was mentioned earlier tonight, but let's focus on those. It means fire, it means police, it means medic, it means roads, and it means schools. Consequently, consequently, if we don't do something, taxes will inevitably have to go up. And tragically, that will impact the most vulnerable in our population and our small business owners. Furthermore, these cramped developments many times become rental units in a very short amount of time. And when they become rental units, nobody cares about keeping them up. You tend to attract folks that cause the police and medic, as we heard tonight, more trouble.
30 seconds, sir.
The only winner in this game are the out-of-county and out-of-state developers and the land agents who cash their checks. We're fortunate to live in a beautiful county where we can have growth driven by housing stock that pays for itself and brings new citizens who will embrace a community-focused way of life in Stanley County. We must remember that the good Lord only made dirt once, and there are no do-overs. I applaud the Commissioners for their foresight in considering this change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.[1374.71][1374.71](APPLAUSE). Next speaker is Colleen LaRocque.[1381.88][1381.88](MUTTERING).
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak, Commissioners. I appreciate it. I live in Oakboro, and I've recognized my property is viewed in that red zone that he mapped out. And I commend you for working on a program. I think it needs to be a little bit less strict and across the board. Five acres is a lot. I'm a Realtor in the county, and a lot of people really can't afford five acres and to build a house. The other thing that concerned me, which nobody else has mentioned, is the fact that they couldn't sell it for three years. I don't understand that at all because life happens. I've, you know, everybody has something happen in their family, and it could change their circumstances at a moment's notice. So I don't really have a recommendation. I do ask for it not to be so strict to the five acres. Find some kind of compromise so that it can be workable for a variety of people. And I appreciate you letting us be speak.
Thank you.[1475.71][1475.71](APPLAUSE). Mark Butler.[1480.71][1480.71](MUTTERING). Don't want to? Okay.
Hi, my name's Michelle Steely. I actually reside in Cabarrus County, so I'm not a Stanley County native. However, I have loved this county for a long time. I am currently speaking on behalf of Central Carolina Association of Realtors. We represent Cabarrus, Montgomery, and Stanley County. I applaud your efforts tonight to preserve the rural character of Stanley County. I'm not asking you not to put in this land use. What I am asking is to please consider dropping the acreage requirements to two to three acres. At this point, by going five acres, you are going to prohibit growth too quickly. With one and a half to two acres, you'll be able to still grow, but maintain that growth and maintain the rural characteristics that you're trying to protect. So we do come to you tonight and just ask you to reconsider in dropping that acreage requirement down to one and a half to two acres. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. You've seen me before. I farm all over the county and other counties. We farm corn, cotton, wheat, soybeans, and cotton. I just appreciate the fact that you're considering something to preserve farmland. And I would encourage you to at least make this as your first step. I don't really have anything prepared, but I just want to commend you on trying to help us. Thank you.[1627.21][1627.21](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Elaine Gaskin.[1637.13][1637.13](MUTTERING). Or is that Ellen Gaskin? I'm sorry. Sort of like Hub, I can't read it. I'm sorry.[1647.71][1647.71](LAUGHING).
That's okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Ellen Gaskins. I live at 1659 Five Point Road in Locust. And a lot of people has talked about the five-acre minimum. I'm definitely 100% for it. In studying the schools, which one person before me has spoke about, out of the seven schools that I was, that I looked up today, four have a D state rating as of 2022. This shows that the growth in this county has got to stop until we get the school situation underhand. We can't afford any more students because the grade's just going to go down. They're already overcrowded. We need to stop the growth of the developments, put it at the five acres, and then switch our, our view to the school system and see what we can do about it, improve it, and getting our scores up before we worry about any more growth in the county. But the, out of seven, four had D grades. That's got to improve. So I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I am definitely for the five-acre minimum. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Luke Fur.[1741.53][1741.53](MUTTERING).
Good evening to everybody, and thank you for taking the time to listen to what I have to say. I live at 20852B Old Mill Road, Albemarle, North Carolina, and I helped my father farm around 1,000 acres of corn, wheat, soybeans, and cotton. And it's really disappointing to see all the development that goes on in this county. A new row crop tractor can cost anywhere from between $200,000 and $600,000. And now we have developers buying land for over $20,000 an acre. I could work all my life producing crops off that ground and not be able to pay for it. At this rate, I wonder what kind of future anybody who was young like me has in agriculture in this county. in this county. It's not just the developments either. It's the stuff you don't see, like all the deer going around and eating on corn, cotton, and soybeans. Last year, we lost over 10% of our cotton to deer damage. And it's really tough when a 50-pound bag of cotton seed costs well over $600. Sure, we have crop insurance, but that doesn't pay for the labor involved in planting it and taking care of the land, even when there's nothing growing on it. Please find some way to stop the development in this county so that I'll have something to do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go back to the top of my list. Mr. John Henderson, did he ever come back in? Okay. That's all I have that has signed up. Are there anyone else that would like to speak? Mr. Morehead?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Travis Morehead, 30157 Keystone Drive. I will echo Ms. Hart's sentiments. I served on the Land Use Planning Committee, and by training and trade and education, I am a land use planner. The key to the land use plan that was developed and approved, recommended for approval by the Planning Board, approved by you, was to focus growth around the urban areas and those secondary growth areas, the pink areas you saw on that map. And it was to leave the rural areas with less growth, and it was to disincentivize, as someone else already said, those areas for development and to focus that core growth that we're going to get in and around those municipal areas. That way, they're closer to services, there's water and sewer potentially available, and we're not developing the rural parts of the county. I met with some of you, and I spoke of it like a checking book in the savings account. That rural area is your savings account, and that checkbook is your pink areas, your secondary growth areas, where we want to see growth. That's how you need to think about it. We don't want to see growth strung out throughout the county, not only the impacts of farming and agriculture, which I've spoken about recently and at great length, but it's just, we're defeating ourselves when we do that. I was in a meeting again with you all, and residential growth in Stanley County is the most expensive growth to the tax base we can allow. It takes a home, I was told, with a home, with a taxable value of $350,000 or greater to have a net positive impact on the county tax base. That's not the kind of growth we're getting, folks, and it's not the kind of growth that we need. Here's some quick stats. Bob covered them a little bit, but just to give you some perspective, there's about 259,000 acres in Stanley County. 187,000 acres, or 72% is zoned RA. That comes with one lot currently per 40,000 square feet. So in theory, you could have 187,000 units at full development of Stanley County. I don't think anybody in the room wants to see that. If you do the one home per five acres, that cuts that development potential down to 37,500. We can't become Western Union County or Cabarrus County, Lincoln, or Southern Iredale. We're seeing the push. We've got to do something different. We have better ideas. We've had time to develop them. This is not, maybe it's not perfect, but it's a stopgap that will help us survive the onslaught that's going to come our way where we can have and maintain a rural quality of life. I support the five acres because of the overall buildout will be lessened, the impact of our schools, roads, and EMS will be lessened. Five-acre tracts that are built will likely attain higher home values, as was mentioned by the Realtors, that that's going to happen. You know, they won't have entry-level homes. And to that, I say that's a good thing for us. You know, folks need to have somewhere to live, but I didn't start out in the country. I started out on a smaller lot in an urban area, and that's where I built my way up.
30 seconds, sir.
The timeline, the bottom line is, we need to keep our rural areas rural, and allowing one-acre lots or less that's currently allowed is not good. So I will add that there's 19,000 acres that are, 19,000 acres and 11,000 lots that are under five acres. So those are already exempt by right. There's plenty of places for folks to put houses. In the areas that are 10 acres or greater, there's only 42,31 lots or 147,000 acres. There's plenty of room. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you would, give us your name and address, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I'm Jeff Claiborne. I reside at 564 Church Street. A little bit about my background. I was raised in Tennessee in a small town. Joined the Navy when I was older, got stationed in San Diego, California. Did seven years in the Navy, and then joined the San Diego Police Department. Now typically, after 30 years of law enforcement, I came here, but typically when I would go 10/8 or in service, you know, my patrol car, I'd be down 10 calls, and several of them would be priority one calls. Response time was slower because of the level of calls that we would get. 2,500 officers, but still having trouble dealing with the crime rate. With increased development comes increased crime problems, infrastructure problems, right? You have to have infrastructure. You have to have more EMS, things of that nature. I love Stanley County. It's awesome. I like the rural areas, and we do need to support our farmers. So I'm for the five-minute, the five acre limit because it helps us to keep things contained, and the farmers are so very important to our community and our state, and we need to protect them. So that's just all I had to say, just some things to consider, considering infrastructure and crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Give your name and address, sir.
John Morgan, 30,003 Dela Lane, Albemarle, inside in the Indy community. I'm just making my desires known, too. I am for the five acres, but my wife and her two sisters are dividing up eight acres that they inherited from their mom and dad on the St. Martin Road. Will that be affected? Because they won't get...
We'll have to know exactly.
It's Scenic View Drive. It's at the end of Scenic View Drive on St. Martin.
If you could get with Mr. Renssberg, maybe after the meeting or something, he could check that.
In both of those districts, it would be affected. If it's not, you know, if it's in a growth area, then it's not going to be.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I got a lady back here who was sitting beside me. Her name's Christina.
Did you say it was an estate?
Oh, well, if it's dividing in an estate, then potentially it's exempt.
Yeah, it's dividing an eight-acre home place that those three inherited.
Yes, well...
Yes, sir.
In inheritance, it would not be affected.
Yes, sir, it would not be.
Christina is back here. Christina, come on up. Christina wanted me to say...
Come on down, Christina.
But she wanted me to say, she lives, she can give her address and everything, but they are putting up 100 and some house development right behind her.
Hi, Christina Barnhart, 12432 Matty Lane. I'm actually in Midland, but I reside in Stanley County. I am for the five acre minimum. I have 122 houses at Garman Mill being developed behind me, 122 septic tanks being put in the ground behind me. I am downhill from all these developments. They also tell me that I am required to have no buffer between me and this half a million dollar house behind mine. I moved to this county as a single mom making $12.85 an hour. I was able to get a loan for $118,000 to purchase my house, to raise my son in this small neighborhood surrounded by woods. It's all being taken out for 122 houses that our schools can't handle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Amanda Cody, Pals Crossen Road, Richfield. I'm coming to you as a lifelong citizen and property owner of Stanley County rather than a gritty Realtor, as Mr. Barbie would say. First, I would like to thank those commissioners who voted against approving the previous proposal last month, as is with the five acre minimum, and agreeing to look at lowering that to a reasonable one and a half acres. Over the last month, I've had the opportunity to speak with many citizens about the proposal, those both for and against. Those that are for the increase to five acres keep telling me it's for the farmers. My question is, if the farmers are hurting so much for farmland, why have several local, several of those local farmers now lease their land out to solar companies rather than continue to farm their own land? We're talking about hundreds of acres. Would it be because those solar farms pay them $1,000 per acre per year to lease their land? It seems to me they want to limit what I can do with my land so they can continue to lease it for $55 per acre while they make the most money off their land. I believe it was Mr. Barbie that stated to me in an email, quote, "Greed comes from someone putting their priorities over the good of everyone else," close quote. Were those solar farms for the good of everyone else? Would those properties not have better serve the community if they continued to farm the land? I guess that answer depends on whose pockets are benefiting the most. As long it is not, as it is not developers or Realtors, we really shouldn't question it. Another point that continues to be brought up is the fact that has, this has been a work in progress for two years. I've yet to find very many people that knew this had been proposed into the last few weeks. I ask you, how were those steering committees chosen? Were there an equal number of farmers, Realtors, developers, and individual property owners on those committees from all parts of the county? From the names I have seen listed, it was mostly government employees, a large amount of farmers, farmers, and one developer. How many town hall meetings were there? How were they advertised, and how much notice was given for public input? I do understand we have issues with infrastructure and the availability of utilities in Stanley County, but most properties in the RA zoning would be on well and septic rather than public utilities, so I don't see how this is going to fix those issues.
30 seconds, ma'am.
Okay. I'm not asking these questions to be argumentative or rude. I simply want to make sure every angle and potential outcome has been considered before your decision has been made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
I'm sorry, I didn't have a mic on. Come on up, sir. If you don't mind giving us your name and address, sir.
I'm Oliver Fur. I've lived all my life in Stanley County. I'm one of the 10 youngies that my dad had. I inherited about 18 acres when he passed away. But I've worked, paid for over 100 acres of land, and I think most of the people that's got land knows how to handle their land if they bought work and paid for it. They can handle it like they want to. The biggest thing you need to worry about is how the sewer is going to take care of all these houses that's going in, up at Millimport, Rich, I mean, Plaller, and up Richfield Road. There probably going to be 100 houses built, and the sewer is going to be going right in the fill of the sewer plant. Can it handle all that? Down 52, I don't know how many houses are going to be built down there, but can the sewer take care of all this? And they say now the Baden Lake is polluted. Well, they had that up years ago, and they lost the ruling on that, but they got it up again now. But you get your drinking water out of Baden Lake? You drinking polluted water? Are you putting enough poison in it to take care of that polluted? You can't let the water stand in the pipes long at a town because it ain't fit to drink. And you didn't go down to any stream in the county, you probably don't go down and look at the stream. When I was a boy, there was plenty of fish in the stream. There no fish in the streams now. There no frogs in it. What's happening is all these chemicals that's being dumped out is causing that. And I think you need to worry about getting the clean water and clean, just take care of your sewer before you try to take care of everybody's farmland. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on up. Name and address, please, sir. That's all right. Take your time.
Name's Joshua Ballinger. Address, 530 Meadow Rock Drive, Albemarle, 28001. While I don't live in the RA zone or anything like that, I actually unfortunately live inside of city limits. I moved out here from Charlotte a couple of years ago. And the reason I moved out here was to get away from that big development type stuff going on. So I relocated my family out here to come to small-town friendly, to get away from the city. So I support you guys putting it up to five acres. Let's keep this small. That's what some people get drug out here for. That's what I came out here for. I bought a house. I bought two lots. I bought the lot next to mine. They're already starting in my neighborhood. Used to be each house was on an acre lot, about 2,400, 2,500 square foot homes. Two houses down now, they've built two 1,200 square foot homes on a half acre lot. They did it at the entrance of the neighborhood. So they're already doing it inside of the city limits on some of these older, like, I live in Woodcrest. It's an older, one of the older neighborhoods. They're starting to do it there. If we, if we allow them to start doing it out in RA communities, it's just going to clog everything up here. I like the fact that I can go to like Dunkin' Donuts and not have to sit in a 30-long, you know, 30-car-long line to get a cold coffee or something. I like that kind of stuff. That's why I moved out here, to actually be able to use some of the stuff that's here and not have to wait forever to get to use it. So I support you guys putting it five acres, keep growth down a little bit, echoing the sentiments of everybody talking about how the schools are overrun and all that jazz. Until we can fix all that, I think we need to keep it down. And I've sat in some of these meetings, and I've watched the projections come up of how much it's going to cost to add firefighter, add a police officer, and what it is, and most of the time, it's not even going to, it's not even going to catch up 75% of the costs that's incurred. So if we keep doing it, we keep putting ourselves in a hole, we're just going to keep digging it, right? Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Jason Phibbs. I live at 48050A Cloughelter Road in Albemarle. Some of the questions tonight and some of the issues that have been brought up, I think to me, this issue has a lot to do with whether or not the voice of the people in Stanley County matters, whether or not the land use plan matters. Because we went through a long process last year, and credit to the folks that were on the land use committee who put everything together. They spent months of time. There were six town hall-type open meeting events that people could come to. There was a survey that over 1,300 people responded to in this county. Now, think about that. You all know as well as anybody that most nights, this room is empty. Most of the things that you vote on, you hardly have any idea what everybody in the county thinks. But for this, you had 1,300 people that told you exactly what they thought. And in some of those responses, what is the biggest challenge facing Stanley County today? Number one response on the list, housing developments. Another one, in the future, what types of developments should Stanley County prioritize? Number one on the list, agriculture slash farming. Number seven was single-family residential. So the people have made their voice extremely clear in this survey. I don't know of any other issue or how many issues we have so much feedback on. I don't know that we're trying to figure out tonight what people want in Stanley County. I think both the people in the survey and the people here tonight have made that fairly clear. The other thing is, that's come up, is we talk about how this is a tough issue, and we want to balance people's priorities and the things that people want to do. The reality is, is you can't have it all. You can't have your cake and eat it too. The people of Stanley County have said, we want to be a rural county. We want to value farming and agriculture. We want to take care of the land. That's the place we want to be. You've heard people who are moving here for that purpose. Well, if you make one acre lot sizes that people can build houses on, it doesn't matter who's building on it, you're not going to have rural landscapes. That's just the fact of the matter. We can't have both everybody building on one acre lots and have open spaces. You got to pick one or the other. We can try to balance those as best we can, but just to put it into context, the University of Georgia River Basin Center talks about agricultural zoning. And one of the things that they mention in there is, when people do agricultural zoning across the country, those range anywhere from five to 10 acres to 320 acres or more. So to put that into context, five acres is not the high end. Five acres is the low end.
30 seconds, sir.
So to me, I feel like the people have spoken tonight, and I don't think you can ever go wrong listening to the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Hannah Lear. I live in Millimport, born and raised in Millimport. I am for the five acres. You guys know that. I've spoke my piece. I've been mad, and you all know that. You know where I stand. But anyways, I just want to talk about two points. I know there's some Realtors here that are talking about, they have young families that... I know there's some realtors here that are talking about, they have young families that are wanting to start out. They want to build a home. They want to live in the country. Well, I just want to ask all of you, where did you all start out? Did you start out on thirty acres or sixty acres or five acres or ten acres? No, I'm sure you didn't unless it was given to you. My husband and I started out in the city. We had to make sacrifices to live in the county where we wanted to raise our family. So in order to do that, for all you young people, you have to make sacrifices for what you have. So if your goal is to live on ten acres or five acres or thirty acres and you can't afford it right now, then you don't need it right now. You make a plan and you work towards that goal. I think what's wrong with our society is everybody feels like everybody's entitled to something. Well, you're not. You have to work for it. Okay? Sorry, there's my first thing. The second thing is, I, sorry, this is probably going to be taken the wrong way, but I kind of want to turn the welcome sign off to Stanley County right now. We need to figure out how to fix the own problems that we already have. Our school system, the homeless population that we have in our town, it's out of control. So we do need to kind of pause the welcome sign at the moment. And we need to figure out how to grow efficiently and holding the developers accountable. And where I'm coming from with that is there's a particular development that's going on in Millenport. I know you all know about it, but we're not holding them accountable. There's things that he has done that you all know about that need to be fixed. And who's going to hold him accountable? You going to hold him accountable? Because at this point, you haven't. So who's going to hold him accountable? We need to put a process in place to hold these developers accountable before we move forward.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Tracy Thompson, 21036 Bear Creek Church Road, New London. I had no intentions of talking tonight, but I decided to. I don't know if a lot of y'all know this or not, but most farmers, they don't own their own land. They have to lease it. Y'all know that?
Yes.
Okay, so when a family decides to sell said property, it becomes really out of reach for the farmers to buy, along with us. So I wanted to let people know that because most people don't. We do need to slow down the growth in this county. We need to keep the soil clean because once it's tainted, you cannot fix it. God don't fix it again. Also, people, don't wait until something like this happens to get involved. Go to your community meetings. Do what Shane Oma does. Aggravate the crap out of your commissioners. Seriously. But the infrastructure of our county needs to be fixed first before we continue to grow. So don't put the cart before the horse, in other words, okay? And also, last but not least, if I was to hit the lottery, which one day hopefully I will, I will buy all of Stanley County that comes for sale.
Thank you. Good luck on that lottery. Anyone else? I've got all kinds of hands, so yeah, just. Steve, yeah?
Okay, I'm Steve Helms. I live at 9669 Fred Rowden Stanfield. And I've lived there all my life on a farm. I'm a builder. I do some small development. I do agree that there needs to be some improvement for the zoning. I do not think five acres is the answer. Land in our area now, raw land, is costing twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase. By the time you put, due to survey, the mapping, erosion control, the wetland study, you're going to have lots that cost two hundred thousand dollars. There's no entry level building, period. Half million dollar house, minimum. That's my thing with it, and I know this is a hard situation here. For those reasons, there will be no affordable housing in preservation area. And the way I understand the preservation area is seventy percent of the county we're dealing with. Not a small section, seventy percent. All the development will be in the municipalities. There will be tracts of land that are satellite annexed into the municipalities from everywhere in the county. And it will basically, then you'll go by the guidelines of that municipality. You know, sometimes there are consequences that you got to look at for making these laws and regulations. And I don't know what the answer is. But I think you need to also look at this long and hard. And I'm not saying one acre lots. But I think rubber stamping five acres is not the answer. Thank you for listening.
Thanks sir. Travis, was you on the, Travis Alley?
Yeah, I think there was another gentleman I saw.
Okay. I have one, sir, yeah, I'll bring him up then.
Good evening board, my name is Cody Brooks, 20198 Eford Road, Albemarle. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak. There's a lot of things at stake with a lot of stakeholders here. There's been a lot said about farming, solar panels, housing developments. But I want to talk about the timberland in Stanley County. There's a hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty acres of timberland. This area is called the Golden Triangle for many reasons. Cole Plumber, Jordan Lumber, and Troy Lumber, that's not even including Edwards. There's a lot of landowners here in Stanley County that depend on timber income just like farming. It's food and fiber is what it is. And people ask, people talk about sustainability, but ask yourself really what is sustainability? So if you read the goals, three of the ten goals on the county website, three, four, and five goes in chronological order, says promote culture and recreational opportunities, enhance job opportunities and grow local economy, and protect natural resources and the environment to improve the quality of life. All those come down to active and sustainable forest management. I support the five acres because if you have less than five acres, home developers are not looking at conservation, they're looking to fill their pockets. And then you start looking at the effect of the ecosystem, what are we really doing for sustainability? Lastly, all I would say to the board is let your conscience be your guide for what's best for Stanley County. Thank you for your time.
Thanks sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Travis Alley. I reside at Austin Road in Millenport. I'm here tonight to speak on the Stanley County Home Builders Association. Patty, you joined us a couple of weeks ago. We appreciate your time doing that. So we support rural conservation one hundred percent. We have concerns that the five acres is not going to accomplish that long term. And our huge concern is affordability. Not just for people wanting to come here, but people wanting to stay here. So wouldn't want your job, you're not going to be liked either way, whichever way it goes. But I would like to have a member of our group come up, Noah Shaver. He's a young gentleman building a house in Stanley County currently with some practical knowledge. Hopefully he can share his experiences with the call side.
Good evening Commissioners, Noah Shaver, 29478 Herring Grove Road. What I wanted to talk to you all night about is affordability with this five acre rule. So I'm not a developer, I'm not a realtor, I'm not a builder, I'm an engineer trying to make it. Twenty-five years old, getting married in October. So we're looking to build our house after the wedding, purchased an acre. Did not take any farmland out of service to do so. And the concern I have is the median income in Stanley County. And even where I fall above that, how are people affording to live? So when you sit down and crunch the numbers, I don't know how people are making it. We've talked about making sacrifices and that's what we're having to do. I wanted to build this house and have it done by the wedding. You have grand plans for the house you want to build and it continues to shrink. So we're building the smallest house we can possibly get by with to have a family one day. Current interest rates are over eight percent. Median income in 2021 for a Stanley County family was fifty-six thousand dollars. If you divide that up using the thirty percent bank rule for your mortgage, that puts you at fourteen hundred dollars a month. Right now with interest rates, fourteen hundred dollars a month will buy you a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar house. So my question to you is if this five acre rule is imposed, what can I afford with a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars? The answer is if five acres is imposed, I can't even afford to put a double wide on. So I agree that there is change that is required. My background every day, I work as an engineer in a government organization. We do extensive plan review. And basically everything that planners dream up, it's our job to enforce it. So I come to you and ask, is this really the correct decision for how we want to prevent growth? And I understand, I think it's all unanimous in this room, that development's an issue and that we need to slow it down. The way to do that is not imposing minimum lot sizes. The way to do that is controlling utilities and strict development review. I'll echo the comments before that we need to hold developers accountable. Extensive stormwater reviews, site plan reviews, the whole nine yards. I think that needs to go into place. So I thank y'all for y'all's time and I hope y'all consider everybody in Stanley County when you make your decision, not just a small group. Thank you.
Thanks sir.
Mr. Chairman, could we take a ten minute recess?
I mean, are there anybody else that wants to speak?
I'm Kyle Alman. I live at 20569 Bear Creek Church Road. Was talking about facilities, the school system is full. The fire, if you talk to one of the fire people, fire trucks used to go by my house one time a week. Now they come by two or three times, probably a day. With the way the land is, I am four to five acres if we can get it. Most of the people I know, realtors or contractors that sells these houses and stuff, you look at where they live and they probably own fifteen or twenty acre sites. They don't have a housing development beside their house. So, you know, don't put it on me if you can't have it on you. That's the way I feel about it.
Thanks sir. Alright, I'm going to leave the public hearing open and we're going to take a ten minute recess. There he is. We thought he went to get supper or something maybe. Alright, are there anyone else that'd like to speak at this public hearing regarding the land use? Yes ma'am. If you would, your name and address please.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Kovacs. I reside at 181 Pleasant Avenue in Stanfield. I'm not here today to bring you facts and figures. I'm actually new to Stanley County and North Carolina. I came here with my husband to make a better life for my children. As the woman said before us, we're not entitled to anything. We worked really, really hard to get where I am. At forty-two years old, I bought my first house. I chose Stanley County. I originally came from the heart of Charlotte, wasn't really for me. I went to Indian Trail, which was a lot better and beautiful. But then me and my husband found Stanley County and we fell in love. Mainly because crime rate, number one, and also the school systems here. So not just that, but now where I live in my community, it is a community. Everybody knows everybody. When there's a weird car in the area, we all know, like, hey, where's that red car? Did anybody see it? We protect one another. We're like family. And it also reminds me of when I was a child, you know, a child, there was better living situations, you know? People left their door unlocked and felt comfortable like that. In this county, that's how I feel. We all know each other. Religion is big here. It's great. You lose that when you're in the city, you know? We want to protect what we have. I don't know if five acres is yay or nay. I just don't want to lose what this county has. Like I said, we worked hard and it's beautiful here and the people are amazing. And just what it stands for and the life that it gives everybody, it's just a really comfortable feeling and safe for my family and myself. And, you know, I don't want crime coming here. I don't want the bad things that come with it. And I'm sure most of these people have lived here and raised children here their whole life. So they want to protect where they live even more than what I do. But it's just beautiful and I just wanted to give my two cents on that. And anybody who comes here, I feel like we should keep it how it is. But thank you so much. I appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else? Anyone else? Alright, at this time I would declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes sir.
I'd like to share some information that, can y'all hear me? Well, I'm a stand up. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Alright, I asked the county office to give me some facts and figures, especially on lots or parcels that were less than one acre. And here's what I got. And this is according to the GIS. A total of seventy-four residential units have been constructed on parcels less than one acre in the designated, in the area designated as rural preservation since 2020. A large number of those houses were in Garmin Mill subdivision, which is south of Stanfield. I'm not familiar with that subdivision. I ride all over the county, but I'm sorry I haven't ridden by this one. It's further since 2020, a total of two hundred and twenty lots that are less than one acre have been created in Zone RA, which is rural agriculture, in the designated rural preservation area. And a hundred and seventy-two lots, less than one acre, have been created in the county zoning jurisdiction. But not all of them were in the rural preservation area. And that's, you know, that's what we're talking about tonight, is the size of lots. And I want to ask a question, if you would. The size of lots, right now in the rural preservation area, is point nine two of an acre. And so I'm going to ask this question. There's five acres that we've talked about, but tonight, we're talking about increasing the size from one and a half or up to five acres. Let me ask you a question here. If you're here tonight, and don't be ashamed to stand up, I'm asking you to stand up. If you think the lots need to be larger than point nine two, please stand up. Okay, thank you. Y'all can sit back down. If you think the lots should remain at point nine two, please stand up. Okay, appreciate you standing up. I grew up on, my dad bought four acres of land down to Aquadel Road. And I grew up on what I call the small farm. And four acres, you know, it's still a lot of land. My dad built a barn. My dad built a barn, he raised cattle, he raised some pigs. He raised what I call a gentleman's garden, which was more than an acre. I raked, I raked and pulled weeds when I was a child and a teenager. And I told my dad, I said, when I get grown, I'm not gonna have a garden. Because I pulled too many weeds. But to say that, I've lived on four acre tracts, which was a nice little farm area. I bought some land from my father-in-law, L.B. Teeter. And I told L.B., I said, I want to buy a couple acres of land to build a house. He said, well, I've got a five acre tract out here on 2427 and Eford Road, and I'll sell you that five acre tract. I said, I don't want five acres. All I want is two acres. He said, well, if you're gonna buy it, the only way you're gonna buy it is to buy the five acres. So I ended up buying the five acres, built a house on one end of it, and I now have approximately three acres of that property left. So I do know what living on five acres, four acres means. And then I decided, well, you know what? We're gonna go to Lake Tillery. Right now, I live on a lot that's not even a quarter of an acre, but I have a beautiful view. And I, you know, I'm privileged to be able to do that. You know, I despise seeing developments to where the houses are five, 10 feet, I think the minimum's 10 feet apart. And Morgan, Morgan Hill's been mentioned a couple of times tonight. Morgan Hill is not in the county jurisdiction, it's in the city of Albemarle. If you've never been by Morgan Hills, you need to go check it out. It is a bad way to develop housing in our county and it's in the city. You need to talk to your city council folks about how they come upon what they're going to allow. Saying all that, five acres, and I'm thinking, five acres, that's a lot of, yeah, that's a pretty good tract of land. Five acres, you can build a house on, build a barn on it, you can do all kinds of things. You fence in part of it, you have a big garden. But you also, I think, the way we start out, hoping to slow down these developers, is to get a larger tract than .92. But I heard in here tonight, we need to work on our residential ordinances. We need to tighten them up. And if there's a developer that's doing something that's not supposed to be done, then as a commissioner, I'm telling our county manager and our zoning manager, you better get them straightened out and better make them do what's required. And, and I do know that our county manager will make sure that happens. But if we got a developer that's not doing what they're supposed to, they need to get it done. Saying all that, half of you in here probably ain't gonna like what I got to say. You know what? There's probably half the counties not gonna like what I got to say. But I'm telling you, five acres to me is a little too much. I think we should do at least a three acre tract and move the square footage to 60,000 square feet on the family, what do you call it? The family subdivision. So I'll make that a motion.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. All right, I have a motion on the floor to increase the lot size to three acres and the family subdivision ordinance, 60,000 square feet. Is that correct, sir? All right. Sir, I'm sorry.
I'll amend my motion to include that the side setback line would be 25 feet, which means if you had two parcels, the closest any house would be, would be 50 feet apart. And hopefully, with those sized lots, that they'll be further than that.
Okay, I have a motion and I think I heard a second. Commissioner Shudo?
And let me say this, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If we see that's not working, guess why? We can bring it back up again.
Thanks, sir. Have a, a motion and a second. All right, any discussion? Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Does this one work?
I think you gotta hold it closed.
Can you, can y'all hear me back there? Yes? Anyway, I'd stand up, but my neck is really killing me, so I gotta be careful. First of all, I want to give a, to all these folks up here, the reason y'all are here, because things evolve. And we started this a couple of years ago, questioning some of these developments that were coming in. We started seeing it and that's why, that's why y'all are here as a result of it. We've worked on setbacks, we've worked on a bunch of stuff to get to where we're at today. And I sent an email and I, hopefully I tried to respond to everybody. But I had, I'm a visual guy, so I had to put this stuff in perspective. So I got Bob to help me here, because I was trying to read the GIS. To give you all an idea, now I know some of these developments are not in the, in the county, but they're in the city. But this is a visual for y'all to, to kind of see these neighborhoods and see where they're at and see how close they are and what they look like. Down in Oakboro on St. Martin Road, the Oaks at St. Martin in Oakboro, those houses are approximately a quarter of an acre. And they got space in between them, that looks like a neighborhood to me. Across the street, you have Ruby Ridge, and there approximately three quarters of an acre down there in Oak, in Oakboro. Morgan Hills, that we talked about, Tim Margberger, I had to get two people to double-check this for me. They're on .09 acres. .09 acres. So to put it in perspective, everybody familiar with Walmart and the Walmart parking lot and that land area there? That is 20 acres, okay? That's 20 acres to give you a visual of what 20 acres is like. So if that was land out in the country, if we went to five acres, you could put four houses on that size property. If you went, if you went to one and a half acres, you would put 12 or 13. Series question, my watch is questioning what I'm saying, by the way. Hold on. Get that out of here. Anyway, now, now mind you, that's, that's still, that's still a lot of land if you put 12 or 13 houses on there, okay? If you were put the .019 Morgan Hills houses there, you would put 200 houses on that same property. And that's incredible. See, this passion that y'all brought here, a lot of y'all need to go to some of these towns and municipalities and talk to them about their ordinance too, because we're doing, we're doing the best we can. Like right here, on this land and the, on our land that we're on right here, and the parking lot, the parking lot in this building is 13 acres. So if you went to five acres, you could only put two houses on here. If you go to, on this, is that right? Yeah, you could put two houses on this entire property here. I know, I know, I know it is, I know it is. But let me talk, but let me, let me talk a little bit. If you go to two acres, you could put six houses on here. And there's still a lot of land for people to farm and do stuff and stuff like that. If you go to, if you go to, if you go to three, if you go to three acres.
Commissioner, Commissioner, excuse me one second. All right, guys, look, I asked, I asked earlier to be respectful for your time. We listened to everyone that spoke and we actually gave the opportunity for anyone to speak. Commissioner Shudo now has the floor, so I ask for that same respect for Commissioner Shudo. Thank you.
I'm just trying to do a visual here. South Stanley High School and the parking lot, y'all can visualize that, that's eight acres. So basically on that land, you could only put one, one house on there. You know, and I, yeah, it's great to be so rural, but we, I think you could still be rural by going to two or three acres. It could still have that rural look and there's things you can do with that. So that's one reason I seconded Bill's, that Bill's motion.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman.
I don't know if anyone can hear me, but I, I got two plans. This is the present land use plan that we're gonna vote on. This is the one from 2002. In 2002, the land use committee brought to the planning board and to the commissioners that we had Charlotte Sprawl coming. This is in 2002. And said, we need to start to looking after our rural preservation land and we need to direct all the buildings toward our municipalities. There's 10 municipalities at that time. Well, by the time the planning board and the commissioners got through with it, the three acres they were presenting dropped down to 30,000 square feet. And looking around at the sprawl, none of the development was directed, or not much of it, toward the cities. They let it go anywhere they wanted to. So had we adhered to the plan in 2002, we wouldn't have a lot of the problems that we got now. And I just want to let the people know that I respect the five acre tracts. I think that the same thing is happening now that happened back in 2002. And I felt like that if I voted for less than five acres, I'd be letting the public down. So I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Crump?
Yes, I look out and I see the CEO of Charlotte Pipe, Mr. Roddy Dowd over there. And we're so grateful that you're here and that you chose Stanley County to bring Charlotte Pipe to us. And I understand you're about to open. So when that industry gets going, I just would ask everybody to imagine, what if we just went and bulldozed it down? All that work you've done. Would we just bulldozed it all down and put a development there? Because it's hard to imagine doing something like that, because you can see the factory, you can see the industry. But our farmland is an industry. And nothing was clearer to me than to watch Travis Morehead's presentation and he showed a picture of a beautiful field. And he said, what do you see here when you see that? And I guess through different eyes, different people would see different things. Some people would see God's beauty, some people would see a farm and other people might see opportunity to develop the land. But in reality, our farmland is our number one industry in Stanley County. And so if you can imagine bulldozing down Charlotte Pipe or any of our other industries, that's what's happening when our farmland is bulldozed and a development goes in place of it. And so, you know, to talk a little bit about, I think Mr. Fibbs or Mr. Morehead once said, we want to grow out from the municipalities, that's where we want to see that growth. And so I want to respect what our land use planning committees poured into this. I have received so many phone calls, especially after that lovely flyer went out. And I will tell you that by and large, the calls, the emails, the Facebook messages have been much more in favor of the five acres. And I've had to do a lot of questioning, you know, is five acres too much? I lived on a little more than three acres for most of my marriage and that's a lot of property to take care of. But we chose that, you know, we chose it. And if we wanted to choose a smaller tract of land, we could move closer into the municipality that is not in that RA district. And I just feel like we've got to do something that is aggressive right now to make sure that we're saving. And we can always dial it back. It's gonna be hard to go forward, but if we do five acres, you can dial it back once we have more of a, a better conservation plan in place. And there are other things that can be done, that can be discussed. So I'm, I would agree with the five acres.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. I'd call the question.
Yes, sir. I have to give everyone the opportunity to speak, sir. Anyone else? All right, hearing done, we have a motion on the floor for three acres, 60,000 square feet, family ordinance, and a 25-foot setback. All those in favor, say aye. Pose? All right, motion carries for three. All right, next item is number eight, opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution, Gateway of Hope. And our presenter is, hold on one second, we'll, we'll give time for folks to clear out. I'll give him just a few more minutes. Can y'all hear? Can y'all hear, I mean, y'all good to go? Okay. Y'all good to go? All right, this time, our, again, item number eight, opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution, Gateway of Hope. Again, our presenter is Commissioner Trent Hatley, Commissioner Hatley.
Gateway of Hope has been a partner with the county's opioid misuse mitigation and reduction efforts dating back to the HRS grant.
I can't hear you over here.
Is your mic on?
It's on.
A little closer, please, sir.
Yes, sir. I can't read it standing up. It is recommended that the county's contract with Gateway of Hope for another 12-month period using the opioid settlement special revenue from September 6, 2023, to August 31, 2024, to review, consider of attached opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution, seeking to allocate $63,600 for recovery housing support to Gateway of Hope.
All right. Any questions? Do you make that in the form of a motion, sir? Okay.
I second.
All right, I got a motion on the floor to extend the opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution seeking to allocate $63,600. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Recovery housing support to Gateway. I have a motion and I have a second by Commissioner King. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Shudo?
Yes, this is on the agenda for the Health Board to discuss on Thursday. And this is opioid, opioid money. And I have a lot of concerns about providing the money to Gateway to Hope at this point. And Gateway to Hope, they sent a letter to us all. And they had an issue when their director got arrested, or I'm sorry, we resigned and departed back on June 14th. Let me read this part of the letter from Gateway of, Gateway of Hope. "Part of this new beginning is the complete restructuring of our administration and directorship. Mr. Larry Wilkins is no longer employed. He departed GOH unexpectedly on 6/14/23 and did not leave records of previous residence, programming, nor financial management." And then it goes on to say, people that are pledged to support him and help him out. Now, we gave them last year for the first time opioid money from opioid to treat with opioid addiction. And they're supposed to follow guidelines and supposed to, they're supposed to have fiscal responsibility. And unfortunately, they were not able to provide us with what they did with the, the, how they utilized the money at this point. And then also, I had got this from the, I think, I think you had talked to the Board of Health staff about this and they did not... of Health staff about this, and they did not approve it, Andy?
They were, they had concerns. I mean, we had it on the last agenda, I haven't spoken to them since we had it on.
But they, they did have concerns about this, correct?
Yeah. I mean, some...
They, they had concerns about them.
They gave concerns about MATE.
Here's, good day, Commissioner. So here are concerns with funding Gateway of Hope. Medical assisted treatment, MAT, is evidence-based and best practice for treating those with opioid use disorder. GOH's current plans do not fit within opioid settlement funding guidelines for recovery housing to allow for those using MAT to utilize their recovery housing. And then they had some attachments, and GOH will have a difficult time meeting the reporting requirements for opioid settlement funds since they are looking for a housing that's inclusive as suggested with the process measures listed. And then they had some other local recovery houses that allow, allow for the MAT treatment. And this was on the agenda for us to discuss on Thursday at the Health Department, and the, the folks are serious about how to spend these opioid money. There's certain guidelines to follow, and like I said, I just cannot support that at this time, just because of all the, all the financial questions and financial management and treatment situations that, that we have. And we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this at the Board of Health meeting on Thursday.
Mr. Shudo, I reached out to Gateway of Hope, and I spoke to them about some of those concerns, and I'm not gonna address them here in, in open forum, but if you'd like to go into closed session, I can enlighten you on some of the things. But, you know...
Point of order, I don't think we could go to closed session for something like that.
Well, I'm not gonna air their business on that, but if you want to talk about it aside bar after a while, we can. But, you know, this is an organization that helps people change their lives. I mean, no, they don't do MATE, but that's not always the right answer. You know, they're giving them an opportunity to learn a new lifestyle, and they're teaching lifestyles there, and this is, they're teaching them a new way of life, instead of just giving them drugs to drug them up to get off another drug. Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Peter, they do have a new director, and have assured me and a lot of other people that they have everything under control.
I would love, I would love to see them show performance before they get any, before they get any more money. And I do appreciate their mission and stuff, but this opioid settlement money, I've went to meetings at our County Commission State Conventions, it's more specific type of, different type of treatment than what they usually provide them for people.
Anyone else? All right, I have a motion on the floor, and I have a second. Y'all read it, both? All those in favor, say aye. Pose. Motion passes 6-1. All right, next item is number nine, the Stanley Community College Board of Trustees appointment, and our presenter is County Manager Andy Lucas. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. There was a recent resignation of a Stanley Community College Board of Trustee member, Ms. Kathy Burr. It's requested that the replacement trustee be appointed to serve her unexpired term ending June 30, 2024. In your packet, there are the applications that we currently have on file, the volunteer applications for the, for the potential replacement of Ms. Kathy Burr. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Would, Mr. Manager, would you read the names, because I'm having trouble with my iPad?
Yes, sir. So the applications in the packet, Mr. Joseph Brolson, Mr. Gerald Eford, Mr. Douglas Hughes, Ms. Courtney Lisk, Ms. Shawana Long, Mr. Jason Fibbs, Mr. Melvin Poole. And that is the, 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 the number of, of applications that we received.
Any other questions, County Manager? All right, hearing none, at this time, I'll open up the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...
Commissioner LaHawn.
Nominate Ms. Courtney Lisk.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Melvin Poole.
All right, sir. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, I will close the nominations. And I'll just start from the bottom and go back up. All those in favor of Mr. Melvin Poole, if you'll raise your hand, please? All right, thank you. And all those for Ms. Courtney Lisk, raise your hand. Motion carries for three, Ms. Lisk. All right, next item is item number 10, Central Line of Workforce Development Board Appointment. Again, our presenter is County Manager Lucas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attached, you'll find a request for a replacement of the gentleman from the private sector, or, I'm not sure if it's a gentleman or female, that currently works at Michelin. Mr. Daryl Smith has been recommended by Michelin to, as a replacement for Ms. Kira Vravain, and to serve an unexpired term ending June 30, 2024.
All right, sir. Much pleasure to the board. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner King. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner LaHawn, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Pose. Motion carries that moment. Next item is a consent agenda. Have several items on there. Hope everyone's had a chance to look at them. Much pleasure to the board. Motion to approve, Commissioner King, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hatley. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Pose. Motion carries. Board comments, announcements, and committee reports. I will start with Commissioner King. All right, Commissioner Shudo?
Ditto what he said.
Commissioner Crump?
No comment.
Commissioner Hatley? Commissioner LaHawn?
No comment.
You sure you want to stand up and say that, or you want...
No comment.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Barbie. You know, I know the, the crowd's gone. Mr. Shaver, I appreciate your comments tonight, and I appreciate everybody that came out and spoke. And I'm just gonna make it real quick. The, the decisions that we do, I hope folks out there, either watching or listening, don't think that we take those lightly. We have struggled, and I would say for myself, with this decision for months, and it was a hard one. It was really hard. But there's a family in Locust tonight, making a decision on what to bury their child in. Kevin Lopez, eighth grader at West Stanley Middle, was in an accidental drowning this past week. I'm wearing green to support social media, the middle school. And that's a tough decision, too. But again, we try to make those decisions, everything we do, based upon, you know, what's the best for Stanley County. So thank you so much for being here tonight. I appreciate your patience. This was a long meeting. Our next regular meeting is October the 2nd, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, second. Second, Commissioner Crump, all those in favor, say aye. Pose. Motion carries. Thank y'all.